Good morning to everybody. Welcome, welcome. All right, are we ready to start our meeting? Okay, I'd like to call to order our May nineteenth Commissioners Meeting. So if we want to stand and do Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer, we'll move forward. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance and agenda at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel our service to our counties. Lord, your word speaks promises of healing and restoration, and thank you for the miracles you perform today. We believe in the healing power of faith and prayer, and we ask you to continue our mighty work in the lives, uh, of your mighty work in the lives of our world. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen. Okay. Alrighty, our first order of business is A on the item of agenda, and it says opening and reading of bids, which we don't have it. So we'll move on to Agenda Item B, which is reports and requests from first the Commissioners. So A is the county payable docket. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the county payable docket as that line.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. Okay, now the second is going to be the, um, ordinance adopting an amendment to Section three point one six or three point sixteen of the St. Joseph County, Indiana, twenty thirteen Human Resources Policies. And it's basically, it's including language allowing continuation of pay for employees willing but unable to work during the reopening period for county work facilities previously closed due to the emergency. So, is there a motion to approve?
I first got questions for Counselor. Counselor, have you seen this?
Yes, I have. It was prepared by Mr. Agostino. I looked at it.
Thank you. And, you know, it's titled Bill Number forty-six twenty, and then it's got a blank ordinance number. And, uh, only the council can issue bills, numbers, the ordinance numbers. We'd have resolution numbers. So shouldn't this technically be some kind of resolution?
It's anticipated the council will approve this and it will have the said numbering that appears in the statement. And the commi- the council commissioners are, um, taking this action proactively today just in the interest of time and dealing with the pandemic. Um, so that's why it's numbered that way, Commissioner Thomas.
So you, you want us to reference Bill Number forty-six twenty?
I think that's, just referencing that way.
Thank you, Counselor.
That was my question too. I was wondering what ordinance number is this?
So it's been presented, um, at the council's first reading. Um, it's anticipated council will take it up and based upon comments made at the meeting will likely approve it unanimously or close unanimously at its meeting. So, um, after discussions with Commissioner Costelli and council for the St. Joseph County Council, we think this is appropriate way to handle in the interest of time.
Okay, so you're, you're okay with that then to go ahead and move forward with it and get it approved?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. So in the, to help streamline the process of reopening and the staggered steps and for the protection of our staff and their incomes, uh, messed up through no fault of their own, uh, make a motion to approve Bill forty-six twenty.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Good. The ayes have it. Great. Okay, now we'll go on to Commissioners Agenda C, which is bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. Okay, do we want to move forward and approve them all at the same time? Or you want to do individually?
Uh, the first, first one, uh, two would like to be by separate.
Okay.
And thirty-five twenty I'd like to be separate.
Okay, so, uh, this would be Bill Number thirty-nine twenty, which is now ordinance Number thirty-one twenty. And it's an ordinance amending Ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being of ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, Department of Thirty, the Commissioners. And so, any comments or questions about this for the Human Resources?
Yes, just a little clarification, please. Uh, I, I understand the history of this was to protect the HR Director who's been, uh, very profusely sacrificing her vacation and, you know, sick time, uh, for the good of the county and, uh, to fight the virus, working a lot of overtime. And then instead of her being cheated out of her vacation time, this was to pay her. And, but I see in some of the notes, it also says the Assistant will be receiving an equal raise on page two of my paperwork. And then on page three of my paperwork, it doesn't mention the Assistant. So I want to know, is the Assistant supposed to be included or not? And, uh, and if so, does that person work as, as much as you have? Or face the same trouble you're facing regarding the loss of vacation time?
Yeah, that was a question I had too about Assistant or Director.
Tim Carquely, Resource Director, St. Joseph County, Building, uh, two-two-seven Jefferson, on the seventh floor, South Bend, Indiana. Um, this was, when I put the request through, is to move that amount for the payout for the vacation personal time, um, from the HR Assistant line because I did not have that filled to be able to pay that out and not ask for additional funds for this year. Um, so with that, it should have shown HR Director change. Um, and it was coming from that line item as HR Assistant. Um, I can, that page that you're looking at was done by the auditor, which I would probably throw it over to John Murphy. Are you on the phone?
Yeah. Uh, what, what we did was we, it's just an inline transfer between the Assistant line item, which was not filled, starting with the beginning of the year, over to the HR Director line item so that we didn't need to do an additional appropriation. It was just funded that way. I think when Jen, uh, put together the salary ordinance part, uh, she confused the two. It's really just a, it's an increase in salary from the HR Director to the HR Assistant. The Assistant has nothing to do with the salary ordinance part of it.
So Mr. Murphy, what you're saying is it's probably a Scribner's error that currently the paperwork shows the Assistant also getting an equal sized raise?
Correct. It's a Scribner's error, yes.
So you'll make sure that that's corrected, please? That the Assistant does not receive an equal sized raise?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Ms. Carquely.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. And that was a question I had. I, again, I thought it was the Director and it showed the Assistant, but I thought that's how they had to do it, so I didn't know. So is there, uh, any motion to approve?
Uh, make a motion to approve Ordinance thirty-one twenty, uh, with the understanding that Mr. Murphy will, uh, correct and amend the paperwork.
I second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Good. The ayes have it. Okay, so we now go on to Bill Number forty-twenty, which is now ordinance Number thirty-two twenty. And, um, it's an ordinance amending Ordinance eighty dash nineteen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, and it's in the auditor. And, uh, it's thirty-two twenty. Go ahead. Do you want any comments about that?
Well, I want to know why this person is requesting a, uh, someone suggesting that they get a ten thousand dollar, twenty-five percent raise.
Okay, so with the Safety Risk Manager, um, this person actually, when we budgeted for this position for this budget year, we were looking at the forty thousand a year budget for that. Um, the person that we will be able to get at the fifty thousand dollar salary would also be able to do a lot of the training that we would have had to outsource, um, as far as OSHA, uh, training, being able to do the ten and the thirty hour courses, will, which will actually, if we would have outsourced that, be at least four times, five times the amount, um, that we're asking. So this is going to be, uh, savings, um, in the long run as far as not having to outsource training because of this person and be able to be a trainer.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, good explanation. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, no, I think Kim answered that very well. Thank you, Kim. So I'd make a motion to approve Ordinance thirty-three twenty, uh, presumably.
Good, I, I will second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to Bill Number forty-two twenty, which is now ordinance Number thirty-three twenty. And again, it's amending the ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, and it's the Probate Court, JJC.
Uh, I have no complaints. This is a state mandated, uh, raises for probation officers.
Right.
I'll make a mo- a motion to approve Ordinance thirty-three twenty.
Great. I second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, moving on, we'll have Bill Number twenty-nine twenty, which is now ordinance Number thirty-four twenty. And again, it's an ordinance amending Ordinance eighty dash nineteen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, and it's the Adult Probation. So it's an Adult Probation Officer there. And it is.
State comments is the last ordinance, state mandated raises for probation officers. Make a motion to approve Ordinance, uh, thirty-four.
All right, I second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, moving on to Bill Number twenty-eight twenty, which is now ordinance Number thirty-five twenty. And again, it's an ordinance amending Ordinance eighteen dash nineteen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty. And it is, again, in the Commissioners and Auditors Department. So has to do, it's the Director of Protr- I can't hardly pronounce that, Protrument. That's hard for me. Uh, and the Clerk. So those are the areas of increasing the salaries. Any comments or questions about that?
Uh, yes, uh, as we all know, the county is going to be facing extreme losses of revenue, um, for the next possible several years. Uh, and it seems that these extensive large raises for these two positions are, are online. The, the Director is proposing a raise six thousand three hundred and seven dollars, fourteen point four percent. Uh, the Clerk is raising three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, thirteen point nine percent. These are astronomically large raises. When they just received a raise in January, they each hardly try on that raise, and the county's been shut down the last few months. I know some will say, well, it's for ERP training, this and that. That hasn't come yet, and that will be here for a few years. You know, or later, we're going to do a Teamster contract, uh, hopefully for the Highway Department. And I'll be surprised if anybody there is getting an over fourteen percent raise. And, and looking historically at this position, in the last five years, the Director's Office used to make thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So if this were to go through, that means the Director's Office, five years, has gone up over twelve thousand five hundred dollars, thirty-three and a third percent. And that's just not justifiable considering the other thirteen hundred and fifty county employees we have.
Uh, this is Mike Hammond. If I could try to help make sense out of this. The, um, Commissioners were looking to hire a project manager for the ERP project. They were looking to spend anywhere, you know, salary of something like fifty grand or something to that. Um, that would have required doing a search, bringing someone in to manage this big project. And it was decided to take the Director of Procurement, who's been, uh, bird dog in this project, and to increase her salary and then have her, if she's still doing her normal work. And that would actually, Commissioner Thomas, result in a pretty big savings. So if your, if your big concern is about saving money, uh, if you approve this, you're saving tens of thousands of dollars because you're having a one person do two jobs, basically. Um, so back to the logic of it. Um, and then her clerk is having to fill in because of, you know, uh, Bree having to do work that she can't do. She can't do a lot of her procurement work. So that's the logic of it. She's been going at it and managing the, doing her job as procurement during this awful crisis, um, as you know, and trying to, uh, manage the ERP project, which I know you're opposed to. But that's the logic of it. So if the bottom line is about saving money, this will actually save money. If you don't do this and we have to go out and find someone to manage this project, that will then cost more money to be, that will end up having us, have to spend more money. So, that's the choice before you. Either spend more money by trying to find someone to bring them in to manage this or do it kind of, you know, on the cheap, I guess you can say this way.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond, for the comments. And I hope you find it seriously for other people's raises or against the raises as you do in a certain position. Uh, you're right, it's, it's common knowledge, I, I'm not going to support the ERP system now in the past or in the future, probably. It is a gross waste of money. Uh, I was getting an email the other day that it will not even probably be implemented through year twenty twenty-two. So, uh, and I would not support hiring a project manager. So if the Commissioners wanted to do that, they'd have done that by a vote of two to one, two years from now. So, uh, again, if right now, there's that office, I believe, like some county staff working from the convenience of their nice clean home. And with the county shut down for the last several months, having experienced much less work after just getting another raise in January. So again, this particular position, oddly enough, in the last five years, has received ridiculous amounts of raises compared to other thirteen hundred and fifty county employees. And, uh, but I, I kind of think about saving money and saving money, not just spending less. So, uh, there, there's a different mindset there. Thank you.
This is Bree Roberts on the line. Is there any way that I could speak on my behalf?
This is.
Bree, Bree.
Uh, you're welcome.
Yes, please do.
This is Bree Roberts, offices, um, of County Procurement on the seventh floor of the County City Building. Um, the workload has not by any means been lower. Um, with all due respect, sir, my two employees have been at home. Um, and I have been running the entire department, um, from my home, but I'm sure the county departments would back me up in saying that I have been extremely available to them while also implementing the ERP system, which is well underway. Um, it's not something that starts in twenty twenty-two. It started months ago, about January, early February. Um, and so I've been basically doing tandem, those two things. Um, and if you'd like, you can look back at my pay records. I've been working well over eighty hours for every pay period.
Wow. Well, thank you for that information.
Uh, yes, thank you for that. Uh, is, is there any truth that the ERP system will have been fully implemented in twenty twenty-two?
I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't hear all of that, but the ERP system goes live in twenty twenty-two. So January one of twenty twenty-two, we go live.
Yeah, you know, we would have, Commissioner Thomas, we would have gone a little bit earlier, but there are a few, uh, elected officials that didn't understand or believe in this, so that's about as early as we could get. We should have been live by now. We should have been going with South Bend, but people were dragging their feet. That's what we can do.
It's a gross waste of money. And I believe there was an email that was sent out that said that with China shutdown, it would be twenty twenty-two till it's implemented and installed.
That has nothing to do with China. That's the timeline that we have put into place so we could do it right. Our timeline, nothing to do with China or, or anything like that.
All right.
I think it's interesting that the only people complaining for this raise are the two people that complained.
Okay.
You know, so thank you quite for your comments.
Is there a motion to approve this, uh, ordinance of thirty-five twenty?
I make a motion to veto thirty-five twenty.
Not seconding. And there's no motion to approve? I'll tell you a motion to approve. Any second? No? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. So we'll move on then, from there. Okay. All right, now we'll move on to Bill Number thirty-eight twenty, which is ordinance thirty-six dash twenty, and it's an ordinance amending Ordinance eighty dash nineteen, the same being of ordinance, an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty-two. It's the Probate Court, JJC. And I believe that comes from the grant, um, money. So, any other questions or comments about that? Or second, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, but the, the money is coming from grants, so I have, uh, make a motion to approve Ordinance thirty-six twenty.
I second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. And now we have Bill Number forty-one dash twenty. That's now ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty, and an ordinance amending Ordinance eighty dash nineteen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for this year twenty twenty. And it's with the Prosecutor's Office, which is, uh, Division of Aging Grant Financing. So it's, it's funded by a grant too, I believe. There's a second, any questions or comments or a second, or a motion to approve?
Well, a couple of questions for Mr. Murphy, or, excuse me, Reisenhour. Dr. Reisenhour, are you there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Uh, hey, just looking at the cover page of the ordinance, where it says current items and then to read items, they're identical. So there was really no change, just the application of the grant, correct?
Right. APS did not grant increases to any of the investigators. We have, uh, I think it's eight or nine investig- eight investigators, and they did not give grants, even though these people are going out continuing their investigations for, like me, the elderly. And we handle four, four different counties. We're a hub county. So these guys are dealing with, uh, the virus. They're still making their trips. The, uh, Director, Mr., uh, or Justin, he's also been investigating because there's a lot of things going on now because of the virus. But no, to answer your question, Mr. Thomas, is the wages in the new grant are exactly the same as they were for the old grant.
Right, and I, and I was just pointing that out, that there's not a type vote because traditionally, only time, the, the, the current and future dollar bouts are listed is whether it's been changed. But here, there's been changes, been no type vote. It is as red because of the grant. And I do agree with Justin, this department, to agree for adult protective services and the child, uh, domestic violence problems.
Right.
You know, the social distancing has kept families at home, which has sometimes created other problems.
Right. Mr. Mr. Cotter established procedures and policies for the entire group there. And they're following that to the letter, so they're very careful with still going out investigating these cases.
Did you attend the council meeting when they voted, Mr. Dr. Reisenauer?
Yes.
Okay, my paperwork says there was a vote to nine to one, which is ten council members. It was only nine. Was it really nine to oh or eight to one?
Nine to oh.
Yeah, I don't know why they told one. I know, but when I listened to the council, it said nine to oh. I made a, I made a motion.
Yeah, it was nine to zero.
Yeah.
Would you make sure Jen in the Clerk Council's Office, uh, corrects that?
We had six of the councilmen seconding it instead of just needing the one. Six of them wanted to second the motion. It's a good deal.
Nine to oh.
Oh, I know, it's great. It's great. The mechanics is right. So the, it was, the council vote was nine to zero, not nine to one.
Right.
That was nine to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'll.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve, Ordinance thirty-seven twenty.
Great, I second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going on to Bill Number thirty-seven dash twenty, which is ordinance Number thirty-eight twenty, which is determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. So, any questions or comments about that?
Uh, because I'm voting against some of the ordinances, I can't support some of these official expenditures, so I will not make a motion.
Well, I make a motion to approve. Any second? All right, no second. The motion dies for lack of a second. So we'll move on. Okay. So now we'll go to the next part of the agenda is with auditor, and it's a request approval of Ducomm Center lease with US Bank for a body scanner. So any comments about that?
Um, I was just wondering, are we going to own the body scanner at the end of five years?
We are. I don't know. I don't know if Randy Squadroni or Sharon is on the phone, but if not, I can walk you through it. Yes, we'll own it.
Um, I am on the phone.
Okay, why don't you discuss this then?
Okay, um, yes, we will own it at the end of the lease. Um, the reason we're asking for the body scanner, I, the body scanner was approved, but due to the financial circumstances, we believe, we don't believe we have enough funds to support the, by purchasing it outright. So we want to lease it over three years. We believe leasing of the body scanner, um, is our best solution. Um, we also believe the scanner will help with future security liability and eliminate drug paraphernalia and drug overdoses at the center. Um, if approved, the first payment would be July first. The remainder of the payments would be over, uh, semi-annual, January and July, until paid off until January fifteen, two thousand twenty-three. The total interest of it is four thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. The interest rate's at two point one six percent. Um, this has been approved by the DOC of the transfer, and the leasing would be through US Bank Corp. Government Leasing and Financing.
Was that Mr. Squadroni speaking?
Yes.
And if you can point your address to the record?
Uh, forty-one sixty-one Lathrop Drive, uh, Ducomm Center, Financial Coordinator.
Thank you, and thank you for answering the question of whether you want the three-year option or the five-year option.
Uh, we are, we are looking for the three-year option at this point in time. We feel we have adequate funding to support that.
Thank you, and I think body scanners are important. They protect the dignity of the inmates as well as the staff guarding and protecting them. Uh, and it's obviously a lot safer in a lot of ways. I make a motion to approve, uh, the lease for the body scanners from the Center.
Good, I second that. All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Good idea.
Hey, Deb, this, hey, Deb, this is John Murphy.
Uh-huh.
Real quick, I, I sent a bunch of, uh, paperwork, uh, with Marie. I don't know if she's at the, in the office today, but it's, I'll send some additional, uh, revised paperwork because I had Andy's signature on the pages. I wasn't sure if he was not attending the meeting. The US Bank wants a copy of that approval back by scan today, so I'll send you a new, I'll send her a new paperwork. Is that okay with you?
I, I, I believe so. What, what do you have there?
I'll email it right away.
Fine, okay, fine.
With the three-year option.
Okay.
Because you're acting president, you don't have to sign it.
Yeah, I don't see any, yeah, okay.
Documents, those, the check is pad.
You're, you're going to send it to Marie then? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, is she, is she at the office today?
Yeah, she's right here, uh-huh.
Okay, I'll email it to her. Yep.
Okay, alrighty.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and, uh, Human Resources is, uh, Agenda A, request approval of employment contract?
Uh, Tim Carquely, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, two-two-seven West Jefferson, sixth floor of the building, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six oh one. Um, I'm asking to have this tabled because we are still working through the contract and having legal, um, review it. There's been some adjustments that had to be made on it before, uh, providing. So if I could table it for the next meeting, I would appreciate that.
Okay, is there a motion to table this?
Uh, make a motion to table features, three contracts requests is really what it is. Thank you.
I'll second that. All those in favor of tabling this, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, this is, the ayes have it, and we have tabled this then. All right. Okay, now we're moving on to the Infrastructure Planning and Growth, and the Agenda Item A, which is request approval of Resolution R dash C dash three dash twenty twenty, Transfer of Property. You're actually requesting this item be tabled. Okay, is there a motion to table this?
Uh, I first would comment that, uh, I think it's, it's a request to transfer parcels from the title of the Board of Commissioners to the, of the ownership of, of, from IEC landings to the, uh, Redevelopment Commission. And as the state law does state that the Commissioners hold, uh, title to assets, yes, we could grant that right out. But then we would lose transparency and control. And we would be turning these assets over to non-elected officials. So it's probably being tabled because the note was passed, the, the, the section vote. So I'm going to make the motion to table.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor of tabling, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so this has been tabled. All right, moving on to Agenda B, is the request approval of bid extension of pavement preservation. All right, moving on to Agenda B is the request approval of bid extension of pavement preservation package for twenty-twenty.
And forgive me, I failed to state my name. Jessica Clark, County Engineer with offices on the fourth, seventh, and eleventh floors of this building for Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Before you is a bid extension request for a pavement preservation package for twenty-twenty. The contractor has agreed to extend their bid prices from twenty-nineteen into twenty-twenty. It'll include ceiling portions, finishing work within the Lincoln Way West Corridor, our Douglas Road Corridor, and other neighborhoods to help preserve those pavements and usability of the pavement's life. This also includes funding by the respective entity to reseal the PSAP and JJC parking lot. We request your approval to extend the bid.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve?
Yes, certainly a motion to approve the bid extension request for pavement preservation package for twenty-twenty is outlined.
I second that. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Okay, moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth Agenda C, which is request approval for collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, this is our latest and greatest collective bargaining agreement, which extends our collective bargaining through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. It provides continuity with past agreements and promotes compliance with existing county policies and either improves work environment, skill enhancement, or performance-based pay opportunities, and we request your approval.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve this union agreement?
Just a couple of questions. And these are obviously skilled, dedicated county employee staff, and they adapt to changes, whether it's weather or equipment. Is anybody getting a thirty-three percent or a fifteen percent raise?
No.
No? Okay. Just checking. Thank you, Matt Engineer. I make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the Highway Department with the great Dearest Local three-sixty-four as noted, outlined.
Great. And I second that. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Moving on.
Our last part.
That's all right. Our next one is, it's a request approval of Contract B dash three-seven-three-five-one of the Walnut Road over Yellow Bank Creek Bridge Replacement Change Order Number One.
This work is for asphalt milling necessary within our incidental work areas to match back into the existing pavement. Change order results in an increase of ten thousand and eleven dollars, an increase with the original contract amount to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand eighty-two dollars and one cent. It is a approximate one percent increase. We recommend your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Matt. Your staff works so hard. Approve Change Order Number One for Contract B three-five-one as outlined.
Great. I will second that. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we'll be moving on to the next item on our agenda, which would be old business. And we have no old business. Moving on to D, which is public comments. Any public comments? For three minutes limit.
Just some reminder maintenance issues. Next Monday is Memorial Day, the twenty-fifth. God bless America and all the hardworking people that deserve a day off. And then June second is Election Day, which sort of will not be Commissioner meeting on June second. That will be Maria, what, the third, at that o'clock? Yes, it'll be Wednesday, the third, at ten o'clock. So I don't stable today would probably be brought up then. For people that are wondering for any ordinances that were not passed by the Commissioners, there was two of them. If the Commissioners do not veto an ordinance within ten days, it passes.
Right. Okay. Any other public comments?
Yes, this is Derek Dieter, seventeen forty Portage Avenue in South Bend. Just like to tell everyone there and everyone listening that on Memorial Day, in absence of the parade, Dr. Damian Dieter and seven other pilots will be flying over the west side of South Bend into New Carlisle, North Liberty, Waukerton, and Lakeville, and then make another pass through Mishawaka and then back to the west side of South Bend. So that will happen around twelve, between twelve and twelve-thirty on Memorial Day.[1768.15]